The Senator Jose Díaz-Guerrero is called to order. Yesterday afternoon, we left off with Senator Respecho on Bill Number 215.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and colleagues. Yesterday before we recessed for the day, we certainly had a spirited discussion on a matter that would put a stern initiative or legislative submission before the voters in the upcoming general election. I wanted to lend my voice and my support and my appreciation to the two sponsors of this bill, namely Senator Barnes and Senator Maschida, for furthering the dialogue that has to take place on an island community where the incidences of cancer and other illnesses is really high. Madam Speaker, I commend these two individuals for not only taking a very bold position, but also, more importantly, Madam Speaker, also for letting the people ultimately decide whether or not medicinal marijuana shall be available on the island. I could certainly tell you, Madam Speaker, my firsthand experience of driving this kind of initiative, and I did this in 2010, where in 2010, the United States was moving forward throughout the different counties throughout the United States in allowing for cannabis to be used for medical purposes. We've seen so many different variations of that effort in the States. We saw one effort where there was like dispensary where individuals had to go to a pharmacy like controlled like environment to be able to get their medical marijuana. We've seen other instances like in California where it was just the complete opposite, where you had cafes that had these items available for those who have a prescription or those who have doctor's authorization to go and use this for medical marijuana. Madam Speaker, the mood of the country has changed, more so where they moved from medical marijuana to possibly allowing marijuana for recreational use, and that's certainly not where we're at. That's not where we're going with this particular legislative submission. But I do contend that throughout the whole discussion, you have people that are passionately in support of medical marijuana, you have people that are vehemently opposed to the idea of medical marijuana, and so what Bill 215 is doing is just recognizing and empowering our people to educate themselves so that when they, if this thing passes and it's going to be a legislative submission, that certainly, certainly that the people, every individual person will take the time to understand what the issue is, and every single person will express their vote for it or express their vote against it. Madam Speaker, in 2010, it was a very difficult year to do something like this because it was new. The idea on our island was relatively new. So at that time, there were people that supported it certainly, but the difficulty is the same people that supported medical marijuana were embarrassed to admit that their medical marijuana users privately, that they, that they used this to help with their appetite for chemotherapy treatments, that they used this to treat some of their own medical ailments. And if you, if you allow me to share a story where when I went to the PDN editorial board on this issue, there was a veteran who brought in three gallon size Ziploc bags of prescription medication, and he honestly said that the doctors would prescribe him this particular medication for, for something that he had, and then will have to prescribe another kind of prescription to counter the effects of that medication, and then this prescription to counter the effects of those two medications. And so as a result, he's having to take all of this medication, not think, not considering how expensive it is for him, but also what it did to him to further degenerate his quality of life. And so he said when he, when he, when he uses cannabis for medicinal purposes, those, a dose in the morning and a dose at night would replace his entire need to have those different medications throughout the day. And, you know, he said he wasn't smoking it, he just makes tea, or they bake it, or they do something else. There's vaporized versions of this, Madam Speaker and colleagues. So, so you can't picture in your mind the traditional sense of using medical marijuana to just growing it, picking it, doing whatever you need to do to, to prepare it and then to smoke it, because that's not what he does. He said the, the smoke irritates his throat. He says the, it just, he doesn't want to do it in front of his family members, and so the best way to conceal it is to boil it. And so when we think about something that we want to do in a sense of provide for cannabis for those who need it the most, we can't think about the other extremes of those opponents of this initiative that say that marijuana is a gateway drug to other drugs. For those opponents who fear marijuana more than they fear alcohol, it just doesn't make sense in my own mind. And so when you look at what happened on our island from 2010 to today, you also consider what happened nationally, like CNN's Dr. Sanjay Gupta, where he was against the medicinal use of cannabis until recently when he did a full-length feature story and just talked about the benefits of it, you know? And so you also have the American Medical Association that's taken a position in support of this, and, and so you're seeing that people are coming around. But unfortunately, Madam Speaker, people are not able to fully come around because of all the distortion and all the messaging against this and all the propaganda against this that, that prevents this community from having that kind of discussion that the two sponsors of this bill is trying to do. And so when we want to submit this as a legislative submission, I think I'm certainly not negating my responsibility as a senator by taking a position of aid, because I feel if this bill were to be voted up or down, as the sponsor said, there may not be eight votes to pass it. But because it's evolved into a legislative submission, hopefully there'll be at least eight votes to let the will of the people carry the day, and hopefully the administration, Governor Calvo, will see fit to let the will of the people carry the day. And then for the next several months, you certainly will see people come out in favor of it, you see people who come out against it, but when we see people come out for it or against it, what I'm going to do, Madam Speaker, is I'm always going to think about those who need this kind of legislation, those who need this kind of benefit the most. Because when I took on the, the challenge of bringing this issue to the community in 2010, I recall going to church one day, and this 75-year-old lady came up to me, she hugged me, she cried, saying, "Thank you for what you're doing. I have cancer, and I'm ashamed to admit to you that I, I'm using marijuana for medical purposes, but this is how I can get through my day." And so I hugged her back and I said, "I'm very sorry that you have to feel ashamed for what some doctors, most doctors are saying has medicinal benefits to what you're doing, but the authorities will have something else to say." And I think that's what we're trying to do here in this legislation, for doctors to say that we're forcing them to prescribe cannabis for, as a medical treatment. We heard the author talk, that, talk about how doctors are not required to do this. And so to that older lady and to other older ladies and men and young men and young women who have these kinds of ailments that can be benefited by the use of cannabis, I certainly say, I want to say that help is on the way, that the vehicle that Bill 215 provides is a, would be a medical remedy. And in order for this issue to continue to move forward, we can't make it about politicians or we can't make it about individuals, and we have to do what these two women have done, we have to do what I have done and others have done in this body to make it to who will benefit the most from our actions. And so I certainly rise in support of the bill. I continue to yield to the sponsors of the bill, and if this, if this initiative is what they want to put forward by way of this particular exhibit, and we've heard that many people have weighed in, and this is the best vehicle to use, and this is the best example of the kind of legislation that needs to be implemented on the island, then I certainly submit that I support Bill 215, and I support the concept of having this put before the voters. I, the only thing I'm not entirely comfortable with is, is on page two, where it basically says that the Santos Amendment does not apply. You know, Madam Speaker, I'm a staunch supporter of the Santos Amendment, simply because the Santos Amendment protects the true will of the majority, and that you don't have the will of the minority dictating what the, what the majority of the community has to live with, and that's the, and that's the spirit of the Santos Amendment, where when an individual goes to cast their ballot, and if they don't mark a yes or they don't mark a no, the fact that they didn't mark their ballot, it's counted as a no vote. And the Santos Amendment and the whole idea behind the Santos Amendment is so that those blank ballots are not counted, those blank ballots are considered a no vote, and, and so you don't have the will of the minority dictating what the outcome of that, of that particular initiative or voter exercise is going to be. And so, you know, I'm hoping that as we go through this bill, that the sponsor, as I'm hearing, is willing to come back and address that particular issue so that we're, we're, we keep in line with the spirit of the Santos Amendment. And I, I want to also say that on page three, in section, before section seven, that last sentence, section six, Madam Speaker, says that 12 copies of the complete referendum shall be available to voters at the Guam Public Library, the Robert F. Kennedy Library, UOG Guam Territory Library, and two copies of the complete referendum to the Office of the Public Auditor and the Attorney General, and to each mayor and senator. And so I want to add also that the complete referendum shall be posted online on the Guam Election Commission's website.
Posted online and?
On the Guam Election Commission's website, on somewhere in section six, the last sentence in section six, I think that's where I'll put it.
Okay, so on that amendment, no objections, so ordered.
And I want to close, Madam Speaker, that when, when we brought this issue forward in 2010, on December of 2010, we had a forum next door at the public hearing room that was hosted by the Public Administration students of the University of Guam. And, and throughout that whole discussion on allowing for the use of cannabis on Guam, taking out all the passionate views for or against it, and just truly looking at it from a medicinal value standpoint, looking at it from a standpoint of, does the government and the people have the capacity to regulate something like this, you know, is a very, very important discussion. And the university students came out in support of medical marijuana legislation, or at least that class did, because that was their class project. And also a local doctor who was off on at the time, Dr. Shea, he participated by way of Skype. And so it, it, it kind of gave the feedback that, that wow, based on that forum, I really think that we can move forward with this particular idea and move forward with the legislation. But the only thing that held me back, Madam Speaker and colleagues, is December would have been, at 2010, would have been the last month of that term, and I didn't want to take such a very important issue and, and have it pass in the last days of that legislature, and have the criticisms be that we, we, we ramrodded something without the benefit of more public input. And so I, I'm encouraged that our two ladies senators here, soft bid to introduce the resolution, then introduce the bill, and then take the bill into a referendum, is certainly something that should be encouraged and certainly something that I'm very appreciative of this morning, and I, I support the idea of bringing this initiative before the voters. And if this passes, then we're going to have to spend all that time deciding whether the Exhibit A is the right policy to have to make this kind of medical benefit available for those who need it the most. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, colleagues.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Tom Adda, you're recognized. Yes, you're recognized, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just have a question on section five, and if the author would yield. Section five starts off with, notwithstanding the provisions of 3 GCA 16402, the issue of whether the referendum passes or fails shall be determined by a simple majority of the valid votes. And so if we take a look at, if we take a look at section 16402, it basically says that for legislative measures, a majority of the valid votes cast thereon shall be necessary for the approval of, so I'm just kind of wondering, what's the difference? Why do we need to preface that section with a statement, notwithstanding the provisions? And I know that all along, there was references being made to the Santos Amendment, but the section itself says that it shall be just a majority of the valid votes cast.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
I apologize, Madam Speaker, that I didn't hear the whole question, but I know that based on what was just being mentioned, I was working with legal counsel to see what we could do about deleting that portion as it's already stated in statute. So I was just working with the amendment on that, and I, and I appreciate him bringing it up because based on the Santos Amendment and based on the concerns of the previous speaker, the retiring speaker from Magana Heights, he is right, I, that section, section five should be deleted.
Okay, Senator, are you satisfied with the answer? And you still have the floor.
Well, I'm not going to make any amendments to it, but, so I would just ask that if you feel that that's the right way to go, then, then I would urge the authors of the bill to make such an amendment.
And if I may, at that time, at this time, to go ahead and strike section five and then just renumber the sections.
So then there will be no, no more discussion on that particular section. So on the amendment then, to delete section five, which is on page two, the last two lines, and continuing on page three, the four lines. So no objections? So ordered. Thank you, Senator. So on the motion, I also have Senator Morrison.
I appreciate the efforts of my good colleagues that have taken extensive work, or have done extensive work through a resolution process, introducing a bill, engaging our community, our voters, our constituents, our public, in this very sensitive measure. I've also watched the bill evolve, and with the feedback from the community, the input from our people, I certainly appreciate their thoughts on this process. I do have personal reservations, Madam Speaker, on this bill as how it may impact our youth down the road, even if it's specifically talking about medicinal marijuana. Although we want to put this before the voters, I understand a referendum is the power of voters to approve, to initiate action to repeal existing statutes, and it goes on and on. And I believe my good colleagues or the author of this feels that through those processes for a resolution, therefore onto a bill, that this is the action to initiate and moving forward with a referendum. But again, Madam Speaker, I do have concerns with regards to how this may impact our youth. I'm not even sure if we're ready, even though, or the community knows if we're ready to, despite a yes or a no, if we're ready, understanding the sentiments provided by our Attorney General, by some of our law enforcement officials out there. But then again, Madam Speaker, I, I have always gone back to focus on our youth, even when it was brought up at one of our forums out there, the Guam Young Professionals, and we're going on down the line of our positions on this. I made it very clear, and I'm not trying to surprise any of my colleagues here today, that I was open-minded on this issue. However, I had personal reservations on how we would address this, how we could move it forward, and I was concerned about the education process. Of course, I know it's defined in law as well throughout the Election Commission that we'll have to provide the adequate information to inform, to educate our general public in what they're voting on. So I believe that that process is in place to ensure that our people, it's not just a yes or no, but to ensure that they are making a well-informed vote on this measure. I'm concerned, Madam Speaker, that there is that opportunity for our, as we already see it, that we already have a bad problem with alcohol in our community. Our vice speaker has been making strong efforts through, throughout the many years, to address the uses of tobacco, and he's done a great job in ensuring the reduction of the uses in our community, particularly down into our youth. Again, I know we're focusing specifically on medicinal marijuana, but then again, I want to ensure that we tighten this a bit further, that we, this does not leak into our children. None of us want to see our children exposed even to medicinal marijuana at a very young age, as we've seen even illegal prescribing drugs are in our community. So as I digest the bill, Madam Speaker, I'm going down the sections, and I come across the section on page 19, subsection 122408, and it speaks specifically to homegrown cultivation, cultivation registrations. And this is really a sensitive provision, Madam Speaker, because I, it leaves room, it leaves room for our community, our youth, as it states here that it could also be, that the department can also issue a homegrown cultivation registration to qualifying patients. Now, I know there's specifics on how, on what type of medicinal or medicinal marijuana, I'm not sure if they're cultivating this behind in their backyards, that it's going to have the necessary ingredients or whatever it may be that makes this medicinal marijuana if they're cultivating this in their backyard. Again, I believe that this is room or potential loophole for our community to, and our youth to particularly be exposed to this type of illegal uses. So Madam Speaker, I would like to make an amendment to delete the entire section, subsection 122408, on page 19.
Section 122408, is that what you, is that the section you're talking about?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
So you're saying from lines one to 11?
That's correct, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment to delete on page 19, lines one to 11. Are there any objections? No objections? So ordered.
So, thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I appreciate the, the understanding of my colleagues in doing this, and I, it's a bit concerning that we are leaving this potentially for an open door. Now, with that said, I, I appreciate the efforts of my colleagues and what they have done to engage our community, and, and, you know, a voter referendum is, is the issue now. And I guess this is now clearly where we could poll our community and see where they stand on this issue, and we'll take it from there. But I thank you, Madam Speaker, for this time, and I appreciate my colleagues' understanding. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Mike Nemtiaco.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I thank the retiring speaker for his efforts to also address the concerns I had regarding the homegrown cultivation, mainly because we, this bill does not address or provide for any resources for the regulation of that. And so I'm glad that that amendment passed, but having said that, I'm in support of medicinal marijuana. I believe that we should allow our physicians to diagnose and determine a source of treatment for any of their patients, and them being the professionals in the, in that arena, it's important to allow them that flexibility to prescribe or recommend the use of medicinal marijuana. But, you know, I do have a concern in regards to the promulgation of the rules and regulations and the section in which it talks about these, the production and distribution facilities. And so with the same concerns that the retiring speaker had raised regarding the homegrown cultivation, it also begs a question as to the production and distribution regulation and the resources, the financial resources, that the department is going to need in order to regulate that. And so if the author would yield to a question as to what was the intent of, and, and funding source, if any, identified in order to allow the department to properly regulate those that would otherwise be authorized to produce and distribute medicinal marijuana?
Senator, do you yield to the question? Can he repeat the question again?
What, what is the intent of the bill to address how the production and distribution facilities that will be approved and registered with the department? How will the, how will that be enforced? How would it be regulated? And where's the funding source to the department in order to regulate it?
Madam Speaker, if you would look closely on page 16, there is a funding source for the, for the resources to, for implementation by the Department of Public Health and Social Services, and I would like to also note for the record that there is a, a makeup of a body, of a board, that will come together to work closely with the Director of the Department of Public Health to go ahead and do the rules and regs, and working with this blueprint, with this plan, and then come back to this body to make sure that the plan gets implemented. So after all the rules and regs are done by that body, there is a timeline, it will come back to this August body.
Right, and, and so I do recognize, you know, on page 16, the appropriation of $100,000 from the Healthy Future Funds, which is specific, which says to assist the department to timely execute its mandate under section 122407A. execute its mandate under section 122407A to promulgate the rules and regs to implement the purpose of this act. So there's the funding source to promulgate the rules. But that wasn't my question. My question was where does the funding source come in order to regulate? On page 16, line 9, "Once the development of a distribution system for medical marijuana or the, or line 6 as well, the identify requirements for the licensure of producers of and cannabis production facilities set for, for procedures to obtain licenses." So now, once you've established these rules and regulations and you have these production facilities and distribution systems that are going to distribute the medical marijuana, how are we going to regulate that portion of it? Because if, if I'm reading this correctly, and I apologize if I missed it, is that we've established on line 22 of page 16, the application fees for registry, for registry identification cards. Okay, so we've identified, we've basically said the fees will go, these registration fees will go to help defray the administrative costs of implementing the act. Okay? But tho, those fees, as I read this, don't appear to apply to the production facilities. I don't see references to fees associated or any sort of taxes associated with these production fees, which that, those revenues could go to help defray the regulation, the administration of the production facilities. And that's my concern, is that we want to make sure that, that there is some funding behind a regulator, behind the department in order to regulate, enforce, and control, and make sure that the, the production and distribution facilities are properly regulated.
And I think, Madam Speaker, by May, that's why the, those provisions would be addressed when the rules and regulations are being worked on, and those protocols are put in place, that that would come back to this body, and that the board and the council will work on those regulations. And, and when, when they have done and finalized and worked on, on what they see is fit in as far as delineating those regulations, then that will come back to the body. But that is why the council, there is a makeup of that council, and a representation from those within the stakeholders and the community to work on that.
Senator Nemtjako, did she satisfactorily answer your question?
Yeah, and, and my concern is that there's no identification of fees as it, as it, there is an identification for fees regarding the registry identification cards, so I'll just make an amendment so that we can address it. Okay? So on line 6 of page 16, which I believe is section 122407A, item 5, if we can insert the following language, "Identify requirements and fees associated for the licensure of producers and cannabis production facilities." Because what I want to do, Madam Speakers, I want to make sure that the department establishes those fees that they're going to need in order to regulate the production and distribution. Okay? And it just talks about requirements and procedures, doesn't talk about the fees that are going to be needed to support the enforcement, so.
So can you read it one more time? You said "and?"
Yes, "Identify requirements and fees for the licensure, associated for the licensure of producers and cannabis."
And I have no attention to that, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so on that amendment, then, just to make it very clear for everyone, page 16, line 6, subsection 5, "Identify requirements," and add the words "and fees associated for the licensure of producers," and so on. Is that correct, Senator?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so on that amendment, no objections? So order. Thank you, Senator. You still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The other section I was concerned about is that in, on, on page... On page 8, Madam Speaker, line 5, there's a, there's a definition that refers to adequate supply, and that is 122403A. And in, in the latter portion of that definition on line 5, it refers to the following sentence, says, "Ensure the department to be no more than reasonably necessary to ensure the uninterrupted availability of cannabis for a period of three months, and that is derived solely from an intrastate source." And if I understand that correctly, the intent of this bill is to ensure that the production of the cannabis is going to occur on Guam. So if the author would yield to a question to, to ask if, if, is that the intent? And the reason why I ask this is because as Senator Morrison alluded to and remove the homegrown cultivation side of the bill, is that are the, is this medical marijuana that could be available off island be imported in lieu of our inability to establish the distribution, production and distribution of medicinal marijuana on Guam?
Madam Speaker, the intent of the, the intent of the bill was to, that it would be only intra, which would be only done here on Guam, and nowhere else.
Nothing shipped on, from off island. Okay. Senator, did she answer your question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. And, and of course, the, my concern with that is that if, if we're never able to establish the production and distribution systems or properly regulate it, then those that would otherwise be afforded the opportunity to have a recommendation from a doctor, pharmacies couldn't, pharmacies couldn't bring this in, pharmacies couldn't allow for the benefit of the medicinal marijuana, because the, but behind the intent of this bill is that we want to make medicinal cannabis available to those that would otherwise be prescribed or recommended by physicians to use. So the, the next question would be, why wouldn't we just want our pharmacies to distribute this? Because those, those distribution, those regulations, those enforcements, those mechanisms are already in place. So if we were, if our intent is to provide relief to those that would otherwise use medicinal cannabis, is, what would prevent us from utilizing our current pharmaceutical distribution chain to make it almost immediately available? And I know that some, some artificial forms of it are already immediately available to, to those patients.
Senator, where, oh, there. Do you yield to the question, Senator? I think the question was that, other than just having it, the supply on island, but actually using, and using other pharmacies, you're saying, that you feel that in other forms they are available?
Correct. Yes, licensed.
Licensed pharmacies.
Pharmacies with, with, with those that are, with those professionals in the pharmaceutical industry that have the knowledge of dosage and distribution and the regulation and making sure that, that those, prescribed drugs are properly regulated, the shelf life is properly monitored, as well, as well as making sure that the adequate security environment is there to make sure that there is no pill fridge, there's no theft or, that would allow for it. So is there, is there, is there a reason why we're not just allowing the normal course in which most, if, I'm not, sorry, not most, all of the regulated pharmaceuticals are distributed on Guam to begin with? Just like what you do when you go see a doctor, they give you a prescription, you go into a pharmacy, they won't give you any prescription without, they won't fill your prescription without, you know, a signed off prescription from a doctor, and I guess in this case it would be a recommendation. You know, there's, there's very, there's, there's already established distribution and control mechanisms, and my concern is, why aren't we just pursuing that model and allowing the pharmacies to distribute it?
Madam Speaker, if I may, I've asked the Vice Speaker to, if I could yield to him to, to help me with that inquiry.
Vice Speaker?
Thank you. Unfortunately, the problem is federal law, that marijuana is still listed as Schedule I, Control Substance. And though the Department of Justice is closing one eye and looking the other way and allowing, and not prosecuting the states for medical marijuana dispensaries, or even for some of the states who are recreational, they're not allowing the interstate commerce, travel with it. Until we address that, until that is addressed, I really don't think that they will allow the, it being, being brought in. But if, no, I, I won't go any further than that. We did something very interesting in the Supreme Court, but I don't know what they would do with this, with the Supreme Court.
Okay, Senator.
Okay, so that answers a question as to why we can't bring it in, and that, that makes a lot of sense. But, but still, it still begs a question as to why the distribution chain shouldn't already exist with our licensed pharmacies, as opposed to establishing a, an entirely new set of distributors, and people that, they're really, I know that the bill talks about establishing the licensing requirements, but, you know, those that are in the pharmacy industry, pharmacists, right, they go through an extensive education in order to properly regulate, distribute the dosage. And if we refer back to a lot of the debate that had preceded the bill, there, there's questions as to the strength, the potency, the dosage requirements for the use of medicinal marijuana, and, you know, will, will this, will the department be able to get to that same level that we hold all of our pharmacists at in the proper regulation of, of the dosage to safely distribute the medical cannabis? And so that's my, that's my main issue with that. So, you know, potentially, a solution would be, rather than establishing a whole different set of distributors, maybe we should just utilize our licensed pharmacists in order to distribute it. So you can, you can have what the author's intent is, in the sense that it needs to be produced locally, and the department will, will determine those producers of this medicinal cannabis, but maintain an already stable, regulated environment through the pharmacies in order to distribute it.
I think the Vice Speaker wants to provide some information.
If I can just expand on the problem with the federal government, I mean, the federal laws. Until, I think it was yesterday or the day before, the federal law prohibited banks from receiving money from these, from recognized dispensaries in many of these states. And it was becoming a very safety, I mean, it became a very, a safety concern in some of these states, because these companies had hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, but they could not deposit it in a FDIC-recognized bank because the banks refuse, are prohibited from receiving and laundering drug money, that's, and, and it wasn't until, I think, I believe it was the day before yesterday, that the federal government finally allowed the, the banks to start receiving the money so that the people don't have millions of dollars in their house and subject themselves to home invasions or robberies. So it's, it's taking time because the federal government is schizophrenic in the way that it's dealing with this. I mean, it doesn't want to take it off the Schedule I Control Substance, it hasn't made some of these amendments nationwide, but it also has a policy of not prosecuting in any of those states. So it's, it's making for a very difficult problem throughout the country. We're not going to be the only one facing this.
Right, thank you, and I thank the retiring Speaker for, for the education, and it's good that those that are viewing today can understand the, all of the difficulties behind this. But those issues don't go away when we establish a new set of production and distribution facilities. Those problems still exist. So, you know, I thank the, the Vice Speaker for shedding light on it, but those problems will apply to whatever solution this bill intends to, to put in place. And so, you know, those are my concerns with, with it. You know, I understand and I agree with, with giving our physicians the, the right to prescribe to their patients whatever they deem necessary, inclusive of medicinal cannabis, and, and for those patients that would otherwise benefit from it. I agree with that intent, it's just the means in which we go about it. We need to be sure that there's proper regulation, there's proper fees that are, and funding sources that are behind ensuring the department has the necessary resources to properly regulate it, because we want, we want to achieve its goal of providing relief to those patients that would otherwise benefit from it, but not at a cost of having it get out of control. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Madam Speaker. Senator, on, on the motion, I have Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, I rise in support of the concept of medical marijuana. I stated it of the young professionals, and part of the reason for that was personal. As many of you may or might have known, I, there was a very significant person in my life who passed away a couple of years ago. And the last three years that I spent with him in the States were very difficult times because he was suffering from cancer that was slowly taking a triathlete body of 180 pounds down to 80 pounds. And a triathlete who could run 26 miles could now barely walk 100 yards. In order to be able to get him to eat, the only way, the only thing that could calm his stomach after all the chemo and radi, medication that he was taking, was to ingest medical marijuana. I went with him to the clinics in California and was amazed at the, the way that they operated these clinics, and the requirements that they insisted on. I mean, I had to sit out in the lobby, I couldn't even go to the back to watch him fill out the forms and stuff. It was, it was very, very strict. And when we traveled, he unfortunately could not, or I would not allow him to carry it with us when we were going on the plane. And so, whenever we traveled, we had to, he had to make sure he didn't travel with it, and when we landed in another state, and hopefully, it, I mean, it restricted the number of states that we could go to, and it was only to states that had dispensaries. And we would go to, we went to Washington State and went to, and saw some of their clinics up there, and, and was also equally amazed at the way that those things were operated. And so I understand the need for it, Madam Speaker, and, and so I support the concept of, of medical marijuana. I am very glad that we are having this discussion about control, because I've wanted us to address some of these other issues. I'm, I'm hoping that this same level to, level of detail and concern will be shown by the members in the coming months, when I introduce legislation to control some of the other things that are happening in this community. The concern that some are mentioning today about, you know, that we have pharmacies that have all of these regulations, this is an article from October 7th last year, 213, from the Christian Science Monitor, not some left-wing wacko newspaper. Christian Science Monitor, "More People Are Dying in the United States From Prescription Drugs Than From Heroin and Cocaine Combined." A new study says, signaling that the pill abuse is not just leading, the leading cause of drug overdose deaths, but it also requires more oversight and training by both doctors and state here, health agencies. Death involving prescription pills has quadrupled between 1999 and 2010, according to a report released Monday by the Trust for America's Health, a nonprofit organization in Washington that studies health policy. About 6.1 million people abuse prescription drugs, and overdose deaths have at least doubled in 29 states, where they now exceed vehicle-related deaths. So I'm hoping that in the coming months, we... So I'm hoping that in the coming months, we as a legislature will start addressing that issue. But we also need to address another issue. Madam Speaker, over the last several months, I got called by Vice Principal at one of the local middle schools. In this, just this school year, he has had to call an ambulance to take away a stu-, twice, to take a different student away, for alcohol poisoning. And so he went out to try to see where these kids are getting the alcohol. And he went to a number of the mom-and-pop stores just around the corner from the school. And he spoke to the mom-and-pop store operators about the fact that they needed to be more diligent about making sure that they protected their stock of alcohol that's on their shelves. And at the risk of being arrested for shoplifting, he went around the store and was, managed to get others to distract the owner, and was able to put a bottle of alcohol into his jacket and head towards the door. Because he wanted to prove to the store owner that it was very, very easy for the students to come in, in a group of four, distract the owner, and get somebody to take the alcohol off the shelves. There's a new store in PD that all the alcohol is behind glass, and you have to unlock it to get it out. Though I went to Costco last night, the same thing. We need to start thinking about that. Because our attention to detail in this piece of legislation about who's going to grow it and where it's going to be sold also has to be addressed. I mean, there isn't a morning that Ray Gibson isn't ranting on the phone about the fa-, I mean, on the radio about the fact that people are drunk and they're driving, and where are they getting it, and how are they getting it if they have no money, and at what hour of the day are they getting it? I'm hoping that we have the same level of attention. He didn't like the idea that I suggested. Many of us who have traveled to Washington DC and had the misfortune of staying out in Maryland know that alcohol isn't sold in the markets, it's sold in the state store, behind bars. Everybody wants the convenience of being able to walk into the corner mom-and-pop, and every mom-and-pop feels it is their constitutional capitalistic right to be able to sell alcohol, but they don't take the control that is necessary to make sure that our children don't get a hold of it. So this concern about this bill, I'm hoping that we will have that same concern in the sale of alcohol in our community. And if any of you ever attended the Youth for Youth meetings and listened to Dr. Davida and the students go through their research that they've done, and the propaganda of tobacco to little children. When we passed this legislature twice now, my resolution asking the US Senate to approve the World Health Organization Framework Convention for Tobacco Control, I've been espousing that we've got to take the tobacco and close it off behind a screen, so it's not out. Not have advertising all over, not have advertising when a kid comes up with his mother, that the first thing that he sees under the counter is all the tobacco. We really do start to, need to start addressing that, those issues. And I'm very happy, and I welcome the detail that many of you are now expressing about the need to control the sale of this medicinal marijuana. Because that same kind of concern must and should be shown for the distribution and sale of a drug we know is a drug and causes multiple types of cancer And a product that we know causes cirrhosis of the liver. But here, we're crossing every T, dotting every I, putting every comma in, trying to remove everything, because we want to control this medicinal marijuana. I'm very happy to see it, Madam Speaker, because I'm hoping that that same level of concern will join me when I introduce legislation about making sure that the sale of alcohol and the sale of tobacco in this community is controlled in such a way that it is not readily available for some enterprising young person to be able to shoplift it, or even an enterprising older person who doesn't have any money to shoplift it and get into a car accident, or get addicted to tobacco. So I rise and I thank the sponsors for this piece of legislation. I did say at the Young Professionals that I would vote for a straight-up bill, but I'll vote for this one too. As I mentioned, the mood in the country has changed. It's now 62% or even higher that are in favor of medicinal marijuana, and so this is a good start. But it's going to be the detail. I mean, many people on this island don't even realize it. Possession of marijuana is not a crime on this island. Possession of less than one ounce is only $100 fine. The problem is, who can grow it? And nobody can grow it. And who can sell it? Because that is still a crime. So the sale and distribution and the manufacture is a crime, but possession of less than one ounce is $100. It's less than parking in a disabled parking stall. But it doesn't come from mana from above, it has to come from somewhere, and we've got to address that issue. And so it's going to be the detail in the attachment in this bill that's going to be the important part. But I think, but the first part is to get the community to speak out and say that yes, they are or are not in favor of this, and they will know whether or not we should spend all the time trying to figure out how to lock the cabinet. But again, I want to just thank my colleagues for their show of concern about distribution, and hope that they will join me in the future when I introduce the legislation to control the distribution of alcohol and sale of alcohol and tobacco in this community. And also, prescription drugs. The requirement to have identification. To be getting some of these drugs that, and also, those of you that are parents, have to keep control of your medication. I mean, this is a whole village, a whole island effort. And we really have to address it, because the number of our young people that are dying from drug overdose is more than the number of car accidents. I think the only thing that is exceeding it is the number of deaths that we're having in the ocean. And maybe at some point, we'll address that issue with my new marathon swimmer, my staff, the importance of swimming when I have an island with water surrounding us. But there are many things that we can and should address, Madam Speaker, and so I'm just glad that we're having this discussion, because I'd like that same detail when we address the other issues. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak before I ask the author to close? Senator Munia Burns.
See to a small C, Madam Speaker. First of all, before I do my closing, I'd like to proffer a motion based on information that we found out and the guideline of how a bill like this would need to get processed. So if I could do a technical motion to give legal counsel the authority to make the necessary changes, to change it from referendum to legislative submission, based on the articles that, the G, 3 GCA article, Chapter 16, Article, whatever, whatever the submission, the...
Okay, on that amendment, without any objections, ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I want to thank, or thank you, Mr. Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to close, to thank those who stood up in support of the legislation or the legislative submission, which we would call it now, and those who did have concerns, and those who really also wanted to make sure that our youth were protected and the guidelines and the blueprints that we will work when the people decide whether this piece of legislation should be approved or not. Mr. Speaker, in this journey, I asked my colleagues to support me in an effort that a constituent veteran came up to me. I talked about that in my opening statement. I asked my colleagues if there was anyone who was interested, and one came up to the plate, and it was my good co-sponsor, Senator Yamashita, and I want to thank her for that again. And I decided that, after the resolution and after engaging with the community and after engaging with my colleagues, we said, based on the overwhelming support from the community and the concerns that I was hearing from my colleagues, the overwhelming support was to introduce legislation, which is Bill 215, that will look at giving the opportunity for an alternative to use medical marijuana for those who were suffering debilitating And Mr. Speaker, when we did that, we had the opportunity to go out again. And we had an opportunity, I want to thank the Committee on Health, for saying, this is an issue that's very important. We will give it a couple of public hearings, and we did. We feel that the community should get involved, so we had one public hearing during the day, and he asked for one public hearing during the night, so the people can, the community can come in and engage. And I'm very grateful for that, because the people did speak. There was a overwhelming majority who said they supported this concept, but they wanted to make sure that regulations were looked at, that if the department was giving something, given something, that they would at least be given the resources to start the implementation of that, that was addressed. And to make sure that if there was, if there was a council in place, that they would have a representation of just not one stakeholder, but a sense from several others in the community that could be able to chime in, this and that was addressed. You know, Madam Speaker, this morning, I was talking to the folks in my office, and one thing that came up in the conversation as we were talking about this bill was the fact, and you may think it's funny, about the security guards and the safety that was done, that is being done at our hospital today. And that was, the question that was posed was, why do you think we have security guards at the hospital? And the answer was, was because it was to make sure that we take care, I mean, make sure that, that all the people that are coming in to see the patients, that that was regulated, and that the visiting hours were adhered to, so that that patient could be given that opportunity to get the necessary medical care. But Madam Speaker, it's our culture that when somebody is sick, when you, when somebody picks up that phone and says, hey, did you know that so-and-so's in the hospital? Oh my God! You know, hey, did you know that Auntie so-and-so, or Mom, or Dad, or Nino, or Nina, Pari, or Molly are in the hospital? What do we all do? We all rush to the hospital, because we want to be there. We want to see what we could do to help, even if we know in the back of our mind that we cannot help, because there's nothing that we could do. Lot of times, they say, leave it up to the medical professions, but when the medical professionals have nothing else to give. I share the story with you on the Conception family again, who was brave enough to share their story to the island, is saying, you know what? We found out that our son had cancer, and we wanted to stay here on Guam. We went through all the medical help that we could get here on Guam, and there was nothing else that we could do. We did not want to leave Guam, but we had to, because of the pain and suffering that my son and my husband was going through. And to help ease that pain. You know, we always say, as locals here, that when somebody's not feeling good and somebody is sick and you go and visit them, when the family comes to visit them, it makes the spirit of that patient become so much better. When the Conception family had to leave, and they said they didn't want to, Mrs. Emily Conception said, I don't want to see my husband suffer. And if he has to live these dying days to help ease that pain, because I have to resign myself that my husband's days are numbered, I'm going to find that alternative to help him ease that pain. And the Conception family had to stop everything here on the island, had to pick up, had to move, had to work with Casey to make it comfortable for them. And then I shared the story about how Casey said, let me do my own studies. And he even shared to the people of Guam, that if you took medicinal cannabis, marijuana, and you took one of our local crops that we call Laguna, and you use both, I'm going to share with you, that for me, I thought it was a miracle drug, because it helped me, it helped me to eat, it helped me to play my guitar, it helped me to write my songs, it helped me to be good and have some personal time with my children and my wife and my parents. When the doctors told me that I only had so many days to live, using medicinal cannabis helped me live longer. As a matter of fact, it helped me write more songs, because my brain was functioning. As a matter of fact, it helped me write more songs because my brain was, was functional. I was coherent, and better yet, I got out to play some basketball with my family, and the doctor said, "Are you sure you can do that?" Madam Speaker, this, this legislative submission is not to ask to approve for recreational marijuana. The good Vice Speaker talked about the decriminalization, and, and yes, a possession of less than an ounce of marijuana will give you a citation. When this concept came up again, our committee said, "Let's look at it. Let's try three prongs. Let's see what the community is going to, to feel about this issue." And out of those three concepts, or those three prongs, recreational use, full decriminalization, and medical, the overwhelming support was for the, for, to facilitate and carry on with accepting the uses of medical marijuana for those who are suffering. And, Madam Speaker, I, I can share a personal story. My brother-in-law died not even a year and a half ago, and when he found out he had cancer, he said to me, he said, "Sis, I don't want my children to have to pay for the treatment that I need to go through. I don't want to see, have them see me look like this and just fade away. If God wants to take me and take me now and give me the sign that my days are numbered, just help me ease that pain." And I know that I cannot go to St. Luke's. I know that I cannot go to where my son is at. I don't want to impose on my family. So I'm going to accept the fact to just give me no treatment and to give me that morphine because I'm going to die. Madam Speaker, I couldn't say anything. I just said, "Bro, anything you want." And you know, Madam Speaker, I had a friend call me up today, and he said, "You don't have to even look far, Senator. We have a friend whose sister is just beautiful lady who's had cancer and who's suffering right now. And if that alternative could be given to her, the family said they would look into it." And all I could say is, "I will give it. We've tried, we've gone through this process, and if the support from my colleagues is to give it to the people to decide, then this is where we're going to go." But I know, and I, and, and, and my prayers, my thoughts and my prayers go to that family member who, 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 who has cancer and is not doing good. Madam Speaker, this bill will allow for that alternative, will allow to have the people vote whether we will give them that alternative to look at medicinal marijuana. This will kill Casey Conception Compassionate Cannabis Act of 2013. May have not made a difference for the Conception family because they've already lost their loved one, but it will definitely make a difference for all those other local community residents here who have a family member who's truly suffering. And if this alternative can be given to them, let it be. If that veteran who shared with me his concern can wipe away all those prescriptions that are given to him and it's killing him, he said inside, and he would just want to work with this alternative, then give him that opportunity. And I thank that old man for giving me that call. If this can help those individuals who really don't want to leave Guam, then let them stay here and give them that alternative. So, Madam Speaker, I know my time is up, but again, I want to thank my colleagues for giving them that authority, and it, you look like you...
I know, I understand that, I think you've forgotten that you said you were going to make an amendment, uh, on a, on the exhibit, I think you're...
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yeah. I think that was done already?
No, hasn't. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Madam Speaker, I guess, um, when, when that amendment was made on Section 5, we needed to, uh, make sure that the provision in Section 4 was also removed.
Nope, it's no Section 3 of Page 19.
First one is on Page 2.
Page 2, yes.
Section 4.
Okay, wait, let me, let me just double check. Page 2. That was on, on the bill.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, 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 from, on Page 2, after the word of...
Which is section?
I mean, I, vote for only yes or no, period, um, to delete, to delete, uh, that, that whole sentence after that.
That if you do not.
Right.
Okay, so all that's to be deleted, okay. On that amendment without any objections, so ordered. And to clarify, Section 5...
And then on Page 19?
Page 19, yes.
Yeah. Then we would have to take out the temporary provision on Section 3.
Okay, so on Page 19, Section 3, lines 19 to 27, and then Page 20, lines 1 to 15, to be deleted on that amendment without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. And then now, um... On the motion to send Bill 215...
Sign a small c, Madam Speaker.
...to 33rd reading file without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. Going back to our agenda, I'm going to recognize now, um, let's see. No, um, when, when a person is not here, then we go back, so then it will be Senator Frank Albin on Resolution 186. Come back to that, okay? So, all right, then going down, going forward, uh, recognize then Senator Limpyaku on, uh, 204. Are you ready, Senator?
Madam Speaker, I think when we left off on the bill, I believe that Senator McCready had the floor on an amendment that he was proffering.
Yes, uh-huh.
So, did you want, shall we yield to him, or, um, I do have a, an amendment that I do want to proffer, but I, I want, I think we need to dispense with his amendment?
Let me go back to my notes, let me see. Okay. Wait, who? Senator Mike Siniklis?
I, I think it was Senator McCready on his amendment.
Oh, McCready? Uh, let me see, no, that was, oh, yes, I'm sorry, that was on the interior and exterior. You're right, the Senator Siniklis was the exterior, and that failed, so we're back to, yes, I'm sorry, let me find it. Sorry, I'm just taking care of some technical stuff here. Okay, so on the, um, the amendment, which is on Page 4, line 12. One second. Okay, just making sure that we're in the right track with, um, our clerks. So, we are to, on Senator McCready's amendment, which is on Page 4, line 12, after the word space, to add, well, your words was inside and outside and interior, exterior, so Senator McCready's amendment, uh, everybody understands, let me give you a little history here. When he made the motion to allow for the advertisement to be in the inside and outside of the bus, Senator Ada made, uh, an amendment to the amendment, uh, limiting it only to the inside, uh, so that failed. And, uh, so we're now back to the original interior and exterior. Okay, so on that amendment, are there any objections to the, oh, yes, there was, I'm sorry, there, there was, with Senator Ada and Senator Siniklis. So, on the amendment, then, all in favor of allowing for the advertisement to take place inside and outside of the buses, uh, school buses, please raise your hand. McCready, that's yours, so... Okay, we got seven votes, so it failed. I'm sorry? Can you count, I want to make sure first? No? No, I mean, there, there are objections, so that's why... Yes. Yeah, it was Senator Siniklis. Yes. So that's why, so we're counting, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7.
Go have a quick recess, Madam Speaker.
Yes, so... Yeah, internal and external, inside, outside. Okay. All right, so we're taking again a recount, all in favor then of, um, the amendment that be inside and outside or interior and exterior of the buses, and there was an objection, and Senator McCready asked who it was, it was Senator Siniklis. So now, all in favor of the McCready's amendment, then, to leave it to, to have the advertisement in and out, please raise your hand. Okay, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9. Okay, the motion carries. Okay, um... On the main motion, I have Senator Siniklis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I can very much appreciate the intent of the legislation, which is trying to find a new avenue for generating revenue to support the maintenance of our school bus system. As the chairman that has oversight over our busing, I think it's a great, a great thing for us to constantly be trying to find ways to raise the revenue, um, that we have in this government in order to take care of our buses. All too often, we hear about, um, buses breaking down, new buses needing to be purchased, there not being enough parts to make the repairs, uh, students having to wait for second, third trip, school schedules having to be adjusted, all to mitigate the, um, the, the fleet, the bus fleet, and the challenges that it faces on a continuous and ongoing basis. So on the, on the general principle of us trying to find a revenue solution for our school bus challenges, I, I very much welcome it. I, I have expressed concerns throughout the deliberations of other amendments to this bill. The concerns that I shared earlier were with respect to advertising on the interior and the challenges that they, that that will present. I've also listened very carefully to some of the other, um, concerns raised from the good Senator from Tamuning, I think? Manylaw, from, from Manylaw, who, um, um, raised the concern about the safety issues that arise from external advertisements and how that might distract from drivers who, right now, look at a yellow school bus and know that, "Okay, I'm behind this bus, that stop sign might flip out at any moment, I got to stop, otherwise, I, you know, an accident might occur." And if we have advertisements on that bus, it might, it might distract them entirely. I, I can very much appreciate that concern as well, and that's something that I'll have to deliberate on individually with respect of voting on the final version of the, of the bill. But overall, the intent to provide funding for the maintenance of our school buses is something that I can get behind. I just have some concerns, um, with respect, um, to the advertising on the school buses, and I, I do have an amendment that I would like to, um, at this time, have copied and circulated.
Staff, can you please, uh, there? You want to go ahead and continue to talk while they're making copies?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I would, thank you. Um, the, I, I, the amendment that I'm, I'm having copied and circulated is with respect to the program rules and regulations of the, of the advertising on the school buses. And there are just some things that, that came to mind as I was reviewing the, the existing legislation. One of them is, um, the condition of the advertisements on the buses. And, um, I have a, we have a, I have a colleague on the floor who I remember he, he had signs up, and, uh, over the course of the wear and tear of those signs, my poor colleague's face turned green. And, uh, you know, I, I really felt for my colleague, I really, I was like, "Wow", you know, his sign turned green. And so, um, you know, I, I think about that, and I think about our, um, our school buses and the aesthetic effects of having these, these advertisements on the exterior of our buses, and in the event that they were to, um, you know, fade or get dilapidated or even become a danger because they aren't being maintained at a certain level, um, I, I do want to make sure that we're not, uh, we're not going to be having that kind of a challenge on our school buses and with respect to the aesthetic appeal that they have. Another concern that I had was, um, with respect also to political advertisements on signs, uh, I'm sorry, on school buses. You know, I, I don't want us to be having, uh, political ads all of a sudden showing up on school buses and, uh, driving in and out of our schools. There, there's already challenges with respect to, um, trying to avoid the mini hatch violations on our government property, so, um, the amendment will also include language that prohibits the political advertisements on any of these school buses. Another concern that I had was, um, with respect to, uh, the warranties of our school buses. You know, if we're going to be buying school buses and a vendor has certain warranties on them, I'm concerned that if we, okay, buy the school bus from this vendor, and these are the warranty provisions, but then we go out and we sell advertising on those buses, and we start drilling signs into the walls of those buses, are we going to be violating any warranty provisions? And so I want to make sure that, um, that no lease agreement for any advertisements on any of the buses are going to be valid, invalidating any of the warranties that protect those buses and, and provides for them to be, um, to be addressed if there's any kind of warranty protections at all. And, um, the last concern that I had was, um, uh, something that I shared earlier with respect to the damage and destruction of these advertisements. I'm, I'm worried that, you know, if we go into a lease agreement and we don't specifically require that that lease agreement, um, indemnifies the government from being liable for the damage to those ads, then we may be creating a new liability for ourselves in the future. For example, uh, an advertiser buys advertising space on a bus, and, uh, that advertising space gets, um, gets defaced in any way. Can the, um, can the person who bought the advertising space come back and say, "Hey, you know, uh, that, that damage was on government property, and we had this lease agreement, and I want you guys to reimburse me what I paid you for that advertising space"? That can create challenges because of the whole point of selling the advertising... That can create challenges because if the whole point of selling the advertising space is to be able to use the money to repair the buses, then that advertising money will come in, it'll get spent to repair a bus, and then if the ad gets damaged or destroyed, and the person who bought the ad wants a reimbursement, where's the money going to come from? You know, so I want to make sure that if there's any damage or destruction to the ads, that the department will not be held financially responsible for that. You know, that needs to be put into the lease agreement. I don't want our government to get caught having to pay back something that was paid for and not have the money to do it. And another concern that I had that wasn't put into this amendment, but it was just something that I kind of wanted to put out there as well, is, you know, our bus fleet is not a static source. We have, at any given time, between 110 and 120 buses. It can go down, it can go up. And so, you know, when you buy advertising space, you know, you typically do it with the understanding of exactly how much advertising is going to be out there. And if there's 100 buses today, and I enter into a lease agreement that I'm going to have advertisements on 100 buses, but we have three break down, is the government going to be able to get sued because they violated the lease agreement and they need to pay that money back again? And so that's another concern that I have is, you know, if we're going to be entering to a lease agreement, what if the, it says that, you know, that I'm buying ads on 110 buses, and then three buses break, and we only have 107? You know, what's going to happen then to that lease agreement? And is our government going to be incurring additional liabilities because we're trying to monetize that resource? So, I really appreciate where the bill is going and the intention of trying to generate additional revenue for maintaining our fleet. I just want to make sure that as we move in that direction, we're not creating additional liabilities for the entire government, and that we're not pursuing a funding source that could create greater liabilities in the future. And so at this time, I'd like to, in order to try and tighten that up, I'd like to proffer my amendment on page four, line 18 of the bill to include to include the language that's underlined here, and I'll go ahead and read into the record, after the word "program", to include a whole new section here that says, "Additionally, the rules and regulations developed pursuant to this chapter shall address the following. A, assurance that any program lease agreement entered into by the department does not negatively affect any warranties associated with government school buses. B, a prohibition on political advertisements as part of the program. C, assurance that any advertisements which may become faded, dilapidated, or pose a danger to the public will be replaced or repaired by the lesssee with no cost to the department. The department shall be responsible for developing criteria to determine whether an advertisement is faded, dilapidated, or poses a threat to the public. And D, assurance that the department not be held responsible, financial or otherwise, for any damage or destruction that occurs to any advertisements or advertising space that has been leased as part of the program."
On the amendment, any objections? No objections. Thank you, Senator. You still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm a little more comfortable moving this forward. I think that, I think we should probably give it a shot, you know, and see how it works out. One of the beauties of lawmaking is that if it turns out that there's other things that we need to come back and fix, we can come back and fix. But I really, I'm always a big fan and a big supporter of planting seeds. I know that we're never always going to get it right the first time, every time. But as we move forward and we make the effort to plant these seeds to create better opportunities for our people, I'm always going to be a big fan of those things. And I think that it's very healthy for us to not only encourage that among our colleagues, but support it throughout. And this is probably something I can get behind and a seed that I'm willing to plant also. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome. Mr. Vice Speaker, on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I understand the desire to find or to want to find additional funds to repair buses. But I ask my colleagues, those of you that have access to your computers, to go to the legislative website, under Communications and Messages, and go to document number 32-13866. This was a document dated October the 14th, 2013, received by, you may then speak on October the 14th. You'll notice that two weeks into the fiscal year, and 10 days after this bill was introduced, I think it was introduced on the 3rd, the governor transferred $150,000 out of the Department of Public Works budget from various categories to a very worthy cause, admittedly, the police department. But we, as a legislature, just weeks before that had budgeted money for the Department of Public Works. And two weeks into the fiscal year, the first thing he does is he takes $150,000 out of Public Works. I asked the director when he was here, did you know about it? He said, no. That $150,000 could have been transferred within the department for the purpose of repairing buses. And we, as a legislature, address that in our budget. This cash management program we're stealing from Peter to pay Paul only makes Peter not whole and necessitates this kind of legislation when we already appropriated money for them. I just thought I'd point that out, Madam Speaker, that this legislation and this transfer out at the very beginning of the fiscal year. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Madam Speaker, you recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Mr. Vice Speaker, this bill actually is an amendment of an existing law that was passed in the 23rd Guam Legislature. And what it did was two things. So one was for school advertisements, school buses, and the other, the advertisement and the school facility, whether inside the cafeteria, along the fence, which was to allow for monies, again, to come into the department and to be deposited into the solopie principate. The bill now has been amended because neither DPW or DOE has actually moved forward, although there is board policy, there is no movement in terms of actually having any advertisement take place. And understandably, with the amendment, is that the author wants it to be RFP, to put in RFP, to put it out to some advertising agency to run with this. Now, there are policies within DOE ready that has been established, and I'm glad that the mover, I mean, the author of this legislation is definitely going to take that into consideration when we think what type of advertisements we would want to prohibit based on public law, based on federal law as well, and not just issues of anything that's criminal, anything that interferes with the educational process. And, but there's one area that I think we have failed to see. And in my conversation with my vice chair, both of us coming from the Department of Education, you know, and then our concern as well with a, the concern is not that the DOE has an agreement with the court system, but just a lot of things that are happening in our schools and a lot of campaign, campaigns that nonprofit organizations are doing to help, the department agencies are doing to educate and bring an awareness to what's going on in our community. And so what I was, you know, thinking of, and I'd like to proffer this amendment, because at the same time, although, yes, we would like to make money, to use the money towards buses, but I think there is this service that's still, same as what radios and TVs would provide, public service type, service of public announcements that are free. And the amendment that I, well, maybe I should read it, and then if you have any concerns and would like a copy to be immediately be, you know, given to you, then I would. But it would read that the department shall allow the outside, the, let me see, the department shall allow the outside rear, and this is only one section, the rear panel of each bus to be used at no fee to government agencies or nonprofit groups charged with anti-drug, anti-alcohol, anti-bullying, anti-domestic violence, or other public service announcements which are applicable and appropriate for educational purposes. So, I mean, we're gonna, I understand that although we want to allow for others to advertise and pay for the space to be used, but at the same time, what are we doing as a community to try to get other messages out there of problems that we're seeing in our school? We all know, you yourself, Mr. Vice Speaker, had just announced that you received a phone call from an assistant principal in a middle school where a student would have to be taken by ambulance who, for alcohol poisoning. And so therefore, there, an ad could be placed on the back of the bus, you know, against anti-alcohol. The anti-drug problem that we're seeing, I mean, the drug problem that we're seeing also in our schools. And I think it's, every year, there's a different type of fad that's taking place. I remember a couple of years ago, and legislation was enacted also, and that was our children using, you know, some inhalants such as spray cans and butane and gasoline and all that, and, you know, even markers, and anything that they could get their hands on. And that, again, was an anti-drug type of a campaign that took place several years ago. We're starting to hear more every day about bullying that's taking place, not just in our public schools, but it actually has entered into our private schools. The courts now have an agreement with DOE, and I have to say that Ms. Jolene Respecho has been really a strong advocate in working with DOE and other nonprofit organizations to push for anti-bullying. I know that they're, and this is going to be a big thing this year because this October in their campaign is to actually start a movement, this movement of "I choose", for children to basically choose the route to go to not participate or be sitting on the sideline when bullying is actually taking place in the schools. And then there's this whole focus in our community and throughout the world on domestic violence. We have the Guam Coalition also, that writes for federal grants, and they conduct conferences. There are women's conferences held throughout, not just the United States, but even the most recent one that took place in Cook Islands that was sponsored by the United Nations on domestic violence against women and young girls. And just basically, public service announcements that we really think could be appropriate and applicable for educational purposes. So that is my amendment, and I hope, of course, my colleagues who sees, of course, the need to be able, yes, to bring money in to help maintain our buses, and I know we're not going to rely on that entirely because it's still our responsibility as a legislature to appropriate money, is to assist, of course, our departments and agencies. And this is not just for DPW, but more importantly, because of the children that, you know, they carry on those buses to and from school. So that is my amendment. If you want me to read it one more time, or if you want a copy, please let me know. But the department shall allow the outside rear panel of each bus to be used at no fee to the government agencies or nonprofit groups charged with anti-drug, anti-alcohol, anti-bullying, anti-domestic violence, or other public service announcements which are applicable and appropriate for educational purposes. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker.
Senator Tiaka.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I think this is a great idea. I think that we talked about messaging as one of the cons when I first opened up to introduce the bill and to speak on it, was that we need to send the right messaging. I think the Madam Speaker's amendment would definitely allow us an avenue to send good messages, positive messages, and all of these awareness issues that we have been, our awareness programs that we've been having to educate the public and our children, anti-bullying, anti-drug, et cetera, is great. But if I could ask for a small recess so that we can determine the, which portion of the advertising scheme do we want to have it applied to, and whether or not it's best suited to address it in the rules and regs or lease agreement so that it can be issued in the RFP? I'm not sure we want to legislate it, but if we do it by having it as a requirement of the RFP, we can address both issues.
Thank you. We'll take a short recess.
Legislature's back in session.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and and thank you as well to the author of the of the bill then for, you know, the brief recess to discuss this. And the modification then of the the amendment then that I I would proffer is that the department shall allow 20% then of the interior and the exterior rear panel and the outside rear panel of each bus to be used at no fee to government agencies or nonprofit groups charged with anti-drug, anti-alcohol, anti-bullying, anti-domestic violence, or other public service announcements which are applicable and appropriate for educational purposes. So we're dealing with and and through and it I want it to be under Section 50A102, which is page four of the bill, lines 14 to 25, under program rules and regulations and that the author had indicated whether it would be appropriate at that at that time, at that particular section. So it would fall under program rules and regulations at the end of the the sentence of program.
Any senator wish to be heard on the amendment? Senator Agan, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, just so that there's there's that additional flexibility incorporated into this amendment, I think it's an excellent amendment in terms of providing our nonprofit organizations as well as our government entities another forum or another venue to be able to provide appropriate advertisements. But I was recommending to the good sponsor of the amendment and certainly hope to get the support of the sponsor of the legislation that the department shall allow no less than 20%. Because obviously, if the allowance is set at 20%, then it would give the business enterprise an opportunity to utilize the 80%, but that it would give that additional flexibility to the director of DPW. So I just would like to request consideration that the department shall shall allow no less than 20% of the interior and then continue with the amendment. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
On that amendment, no objection. Any other senator wish to be heard on the main motion? No. I don't well, at least not while I was sitting here, but I'll recognize you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. There were some concerns that we had, and I know that the main author of this measure is going to introduce an overall amendment that will have Department of Public Works working with the Board of Education to ensure that board policies are reflected. So he'll take care of that. My amendment is on page three, line 22. It's any advertising funds collected for staff development center behind GW and many allow will be distributed as follows, and it has the breakdown. Mr. Speaker, there no longer is such a place. So this again, as Madam Speaker said, this was previous legislation. So I move to delete any adverti line 22, any advertisement funds, that whole sentence that ends on line 25.
I'm sorry, can you the page number is?
Page three, Madam Speaker.
Page three.
Line 22. The the sentence that begins with any advertising funds?
Yes, okay.
Oh, yes. And so we no longer have a staff development center? That has since been removed.
So you want to delete that sentence?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're on page three, lines 22 to 25, to delete, starting with any advertising to the end where it says facilities to be deleted. No objections? So ordered. Thank you very much, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Somebody was saying Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, did she was there something you wanted to? Okay, so then for the closing, Senator Mike Yama Shita, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I just want to thank all my colleagues for their input in pointing out both the pros and the cons of the bill. I think the amendment that Madam Speaker and Senator Yamashita proffered in regarding to the messaging, I think that really does address one of the one of the one of the cons of the bill, and that's making sure that we have the right messaging when we pursue this. And I think the fact that we're allotting no less than 20% of the space to be used for nonprofits to promote such things as anti-bullying, anti-drug, anti-alcohol, abuse, anti-tobacco, I think these are great things. And and I think those amendments have only made the bill stronger. You know, we've addressed some of the concerns regarding the safety side of it. You know, one of the issues is, you know, the making sure that the that our department, the DPW, has the ability to promulgate the rules and regs to make sure that they address those safety concerns. And I do want to just add one other amendment as we spoke about in regards to, and I believe they were all passed out. And this amendment, Madam Speaker, is on page 14, excuse me, page four, lines 14 through 25. And it was first brought up by our senator from Yumatic in Section 50A102, under promulgation of rules and regulations. I just want to ensure that that it after department, the following words follow, "in consultation with GDOE." And then it will continue on to "shall develop rules and regulations," and then add in the following words pursuant to the AAL, and then proceed with governing the standard size.
Okay, so we take that first one on that amendment? No objections? So ordered. There are second?
And then additionally, Madam Speaker, we had spoke about making sure that we reference the and this goes back to the fact that this this bill, Bill 204, amends existing existing public law. And what we want and as a result of that initial public law, there was language in there that required the GDOE board to develop policies on on how to regulate the advertising. And so in that spirit and with the intent of the initial law and the spirit of the initial law, in section on Section 50A103 of the bill, and Madam Speaker, that's on page four, we want to add the following language, starting at line 25, where we add in "and shall specifically prohibit advertising that is prohibited by GDOE board policy for the lease of advertising space at schools or other educational facilities, or prohibited by GDOE board policy from being promoted during school hours or during extracurricular activities, including but not limited to foods of minimal nutritional value." And Madam Speaker, what this does is just brings the amendment into compliance with the spirit of the initial public law and references that board policy so that we can use it as a general guideline on how to pursue the the RFP development of the the promulgation of the rules and regulations as well as the development of the standard lease agreement. And I believe every all of the senators received the amendment.
Yes, and I just want to let me just formally do this because I I do have this, I mean, let me take care of that, then I'll go back to another. So on the lease agreement, that section, then with the new language, no objections? So ordered. Now, yesterday, if I may, and I know I want the senator to to listen, but I know Senator Yamashita, that originally you had an amendment that passed where it said that such rules on line 18 and reg shall proceed with the AAA process, but because of the language that now was proffered by Senator Yama Shita pursuant to AAL, that there would not be a need for that. So can I get that motion from you, please? So to go ahead and then move to delete that that amendment that passed.
So Madam Speaker, the amendment then is to delete the amendment made yesterday to ensure that the AAA process was adhered to.
Thank you. And that language is such rules and regulations shall proceed with the AAA process?
Yes, ma'am.
No objections? So ordered. Thank you. Senator, we just cleaned it up a little bit on an amendment that Senator Yamashita proffered yesterday about the AAA, and you had included incorporated in 50A102. So that was just to clean it up. Thank you. Is there anything else, Senator Yama Shita? You're going to yield some of your closing time over to Senator Ada?
Yes, Senator Agan has a would like to speak on the amendment.
Oh, which which amendment?
50 50A103.
103. Okay, well, we passed it.
Yes, I understand, Madam Speaker. But if if I can beg your indulgence and the members of this body, and I want to thank the sponsor of the amendment and the legislation for at least considering an amendment. You know, Madam Speaker, this is is something that was put together not only by the sponsor of the amendment, but also with the good legal counsel of the minority. And it highlights the lease of advertising space and the promotion of school hours or extracurricular activities as it applies to the GDOE board policy. But I was sharing with the sponsor that I think that expanding that realm, so let's say, for example, the board enacts a new policy that covers a different area, other than leasing of facilities for advertising space or for extracurricular activities, they enact a policy a year from today. I was just going to propose that this particular section be broad enough so that it would incorporate any additional future actions on the part of the board, which which would be consistent with the intent of the sponsor. So Madam Speaker, with your indulgence, I I do know that this particular provision was adopted, but I was going to make a recommendation that a motion to delete right after board policy, it will read "and shall specifically prohibit advertising that is prohibited by GDOE board policy," comma, and then continue with "including but not limited to foods of minimal nutritional value." So that would encompass or that would allow and grant flexibility in terms of the Department of Public Works as well as GDOE, should there be future policies enacted by by the board that this body may not have to come back and actually insert that additional policy. So I would just like the to request a consideration, Madam Speaker, that it be brought in to just read "and shall specifically prohibit advertising that is prohibited by GDOE board policy," comma, "including but not limited to foods of minimal nutritional value." And I believe that that would that would address any future policies that may be enacted by the GDOE board. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
If if I may, the in the 23rd Guam legislation, when this was passed, it was for several advertisements, not just in buses. It included, of course, inside the gym, the cafeteria, the fans, even in, you know, the hallways, all of those. So it was was very general. And if you look at the bottom where it says the policy 6620.1 prohibits, it does indicate certain prohibitions of certain type of advertisement. And you're right, we didn't want to limit it to just that because in the discussion yesterday, there are other things that would surface, such as fashion and fads going on in the school, to expand, you know, beyond that as well because there were incidences of fights to take items that are popular at the time. So and shoes, you're right, I mean, shoes was a big thing and and cell phones, so. Okay, we're gonna let me take a brief recess. Okay, we can, let me take a brief recess. Senator Aden, you have...
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I'd like to also thank our legal counsel for sharing her legal advice in this regard. And just based on the discussion, and I understand that you also highlight some other potential or impending policies that the board may adopt, I wanted to ensure that the language was wide enough or comprehensive enough so that it would incorporate any future policies that would be proposed. But based on your reading and based on the sponsor's reading, you both feel comfortable that it would encompass this, so I would like to withdraw my motion.
Thank you. On that motion, then, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you. Senator Limtiako to further close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, just as a response to the timing of the legislation, I just want to point out that this is an amendment to an existing law. There was nothing really preventing the law from being implemented back when it was first initiated. However, I do have my personal opinion that the impediment to the implementation was that the government's just not in this industry, and so by issuing the RFP, it opens it up to allow for the potential benefit. So in relation to timing, you know, as the Vice Speaker alluded to, you know, there's no correlation between that. The law existed already, there was nothing to prevent it. What the Bill 204 does is just allows it to really come to fruition, the true intent and spirit of the initial legislation and public law. Madam Speaker, I want to thank everybody, all of my colleagues for contributing to the bill. It makes it a much better bill, far from ideal, but nonetheless addresses a decade-long problem with the maintenance of our school buses. It engages the private sector, which is what our government really should be doing, because that private sector pays taxes, it draws revenue into our government, and it really puts the subject matter experts in the best position to solve some of these problems that our government, they're just not in the industry to do. So, you know, you potentially are adding jobs, of course, are paying taxes and growing government revenue, and of course, we're focusing that money on the maintenance. The funding can go a long way to provide DPW with the resources they need to get our buses up and running, keep them running, reduce costs and wear and tear from having to eliminate or run double routes. It will also, it may also alleviate the need for some early morning pickup schedules, which I'm sure a lot of our schoolchildren would be happy to hear, if they don't have to wake up at 4:30 in the morning to catch a bus, because that bus has to run two shifts. But far more important is that it provides a funding resource to adequately maintain the safety of buses, the safety of the buses, which is critical to the safety of our children. It's far from ideal. I would prefer that we don't do this, if we had funding resources to accomplish it, but the harsh reality is that we don't, and we haven't had them and haven't addressed it for over three decades. And I referenced the editorial from the Joe Murphy's Pipe Dreams that talks about the same thing back in 1974. So, Madam Speaker, I thank my colleagues. I'd also like to add Speaker Juan Pat as an author of the bill, Senator McCready, as well as Senator Siniklas as co-authors to the bill, and thank you for the time, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, without any objections, so ordered. I'd just like to make an announcement for a technical correction brought to my attention by our clerks as well, is that it will be introduced as amended rather than substituted. Okay, so on the motion then to send Bill 204 dash 32, the third reading filed, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Aden, you ready for 186? Resolution 186, Senator Aden, you recognize.
Well, yes, Madam Speaker, thank you very much for recognizing me. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move for the placement of Resolution Number 186, S32COR, on to the third reading for consideration by the body.
And would you like to speak on it?
Just very briefly, Madam Speaker. First of all, I'd like to start off by thanking the good Senator Tony Ada, as well as McCready, Senator McCready, for cosponsoring this particular resolution. And just for the interest of the public, it reads relative to respectfully requesting President Barack Obama, Department of Defense Secretary Chuck Hagel, and the United States Congress to permanently station a terminal high-altitude area defense THAAD system and a Patriot missile system, defense system on Guam for the protection of Guam, the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands, CNMI, and the neighboring islands throughout Micronesia and the Asia-Pacific region. Madam Speaker, I think that as you glance through or you read through this particular resolution, it highlights the benefits of having such a system, or systems, here on island. And not too long ago, in April of last year, we here in our island community, as well as in the region, experienced a threat by North Korea, and as a result of that particular threat, the THAAD system, which is one of two that has been invented to date, was, one of them was commissioned over here to Guam to provide that defense mechanism also as a deterrent for any aggression by North Korea. And subsequent to that, it appeared as if, in fact, the activities coming out of North Korea began subsiding. But in conjunction with that, Madam Speaker, I think there's no hidden secret that having two major base facilities, military base facilities on island, perhaps prevents, presents a situation whereby the threat will continue to persist, particularly in light of North Korea, as well as any other adversary that the U.S. may have in the region. So this is a resolution just requesting consideration, and I believe that it's somewhat timely, only because as you look at the eventual release before June of this year, or by the end of June of this year of the draft environmental impact statement, certainly this would provide some added information and request on behalf of the community and members of this body, should it pass, that this particular system or these particular systems be considered as part of the defense mechanism that is provided here in Guam. So I ask all of our colleagues to please consider supporting this resolution. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, there being none, the motion then to send Resolution 186 through the third reading filed, without any objections, so ordered. Okay, welcome. Mr. Vice Speaker, and you asked for 190 for this afternoon, and what about 192? Which one do you want to do, this morning, one this morning and one this afternoon? Okay, 190. You recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to place Bill 190 dash 32 on the third reading file and ask that it be, I have an opportunity to speak.
So 190, the third reading, and you want to speak on it?
Please.
Yes, please, we're seated.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I know that all of us in this legislature have realized that one of our major responsibilities is to try to do something about, one, improving the educational system on this island, and, two, spurring this economy. About 15 months ago, when we all appeared at the student forum at the University of Guam before the 2012 election, I was asked the question, what would I do to spur the economy? And I gave a very short response, actually. My simple response was, in order for this economy to be improved, and in order for Guam to diversify itself past the military and tourism, the University of Guam would have to become a research university. I know I'm not an educator, Madam Speaker, and I probably, and I have no experience except for the number of semesters that I spoke, I taught at the university. And I don't have any business experience, and so I can't claim to be an entrepreneur. But what I do enjoy is I do enjoy reading, and I've read considerably on this area. In the last year and a half, I've had the good fortune of finding two books that have, that I would recommend to all of you, even after this bill, whatever happens to what happens. But it's two books, one by President Clinton, Back to Work, which I know all of us are very concerned about, about trying to make sure that our unemployment goes down, and two, a book by a guy named Dan Senor and Saul Singer called Upstart Nation, which talks about how Israel, in the middle of the desert, has become this thriving economy, in spite of not having any natural resources, say, for its people, and not having enough water, yet being able to be near the breadbasket, not breadbasket literally, but the food producer in the Middle East. And it all took ingenuity, and all that ingenuity came from its university people and the relationship that they have with each other. In President Clinton's book, Back to Work, he spoke very highly about, or spent many, many pages discussing the phenomenon in San Diego, about how this sleepy military town that was dying in the 70s, and maybe even, I mean, before that, was just stagnant, had become the biotech center of the country. And so I did some research, and had my staff do some research, and they sent me hundreds additional pages to read. And though I don't think that we all have enough time to do all the reading that I had done, I did send to all of you a Dear Colleague letter this morning about 1:00. And in it, I attached a 25-minute presentation by the Provost of UC San Diego. I know that some of you have been approached by members of the University of Guam staff to support the concept of the UC, RCUOG, and some of you may give credence to some of the things that they're saying, and some of you, for whatever reason, may have had a bad experience with one of them, and you don't believe them. But I think if all of you, even during the lunch period, which is the reason why I was glad to start before, just take 25 minutes to listen to this presentation by the Chancellor of UC San Diego. You will understand the reason for the importance of this, of this concept of a research university. San Diego, UC San Diego has managed to build itself and its surrounding community as the as an agent of change. It has managed to spur economic development. It has managed to create nearly a half a million jobs. It attracts resources and talent to the San Diego area, and it unites research with service and education. The exploitation of knowledge through innovation is key to a sustainable economic growth. U.S. universities introduced 657 new products, 4,284 patents issued for invention, and 20,642 patent disclosures in FY 2010 alone. U.S. universities received 2.4 billion in license income in FY 2010. The University of San Diego itself, I think, raised 90 million a year on their licensing fees. U.S. universities have spun off 651 companies, and 75% are located in their own state. Like UC San Diego, the University of Guam budget has a very small percentage of its budget actually allocated from the state. I believe the University of San Diego gets about 250 million from the state, but its budget is over $1 billion a year. The University of Guam, if memory serves me right, gets about 28 million from us annually, maybe a little more, but its annual budget is over $100 million. That $100 million, they receive from grant applications that they, as researchers and as professors and administrators, have applied for to assist in developing the university and to fulfill its mission. And if you listen to the presentation by the Chancellor, he talks about a federal law that was passed several years ago, where the National Science Foundation has authorized universities that do research to be able to keep their keep the patents and benefit from the patents that they manage to develop from their research. The University of San Diego is San Diego County's third-largest employer because of the UC San Diego averages more than 400 innovations every year. The campus has a growing portfolio of over 2,800 active innovations and more than 1,800 patents. Total intellectual property in FY 2010 was $18.7 million. The vision in 190, I had spoken, after I had mentioned this at the university a year ago in November, President Underwood came and spoke to you and I, Senator Yamashita and Senator Ben, about the fact that the university was thinking about bringing out a consultant to assist them in developing this concept of a research corporation. Research corporations have, universities have, are almost 70 years old. Besides UC San Diego, there's University of Hawaii. And when the University of Hawaii established its research corporation in 1965, the Standing Committee in the Senate of Hawaii, the Ways and Means Committee, wrote this in its report, increasing research contracts accepted by the university. Increasing research contracts accepted by the university require rapidity of action and flexibility in operational and financial activities more characteristic of business firms than government agencies. State regulations of many types which control the university's normal function do not provide the expeditious managerial environmental need to function in the highly competitive area of science-related activities now involving universities, federal government, and private Another report from in the Senate, in the House Committee on Higher Education wrote, "The rapid and extensive entry of the University of Hawaii into basic and applied research programs sponsored by the federal government and into applied research programs which couple universities' capability with that of the private industry require a much more flexible and streamlined method of operation than is permitted the usual operation of state agencies. In short, the university must be able to function in research activities more like a business." And I know that one of my, one of our colleagues is really concerned about some of the exceptions that Bill 190 has provided the university. But, Madam Speaker, it's imperative that we assist the university in establishing this research corporation. We can, and I was very happy that the university wants to do this, it goes in hand-in-hand with its efforts to go from good to great. They did invite out a consultant to assist in the development of the research corporation. That consultant worked with my staff in writing the legislation. And we believe that the legislation that we have provided with the establishment of a separate board of directors, like the University Endowment Foundation, which is separate from the Board of Regents, but still answers to the Board of Regents, gives the university some ability to be able to, I mean, has the ability to be able to control this research corporation. But if, if we believe that it is our responsibility to try to diversify our economy by establishing different things on this island, it can and only will happen if the University of Guam becomes a research university. I mean, it may not be the biotech center that San Diego has become, or the micro, the Internet center that, that the Palo Alto-Stanford area is. But I really do believe that this university, with the leadership and with the professors that they have up there, can and should find their niche. What is it that they can do in this area in the Pacific, this close to Asia, with the ocean below us? What is it that they can do in their research to be able to spawn companies and startup companies that will be able to employ the students that were coming out of the university? The Provost, in the presentation that I sent to you, talked about the fact that he was invited by Uganda, the country of Uganda, to come and try to help because the president there understood the need for a research university. And the Provost was mentioning that the one thing that he was able to establish in Uganda was a school of engineering, much like what the university is currently considering right now, the establishment of a engineering school, a separate up there. But we've got to give them the infrastructure by which they can receive this money and to be able to move quickly. I know that some of us, and even I, had reservations about giving them some of the exceptions from the procurement law and from the, some of the procurement exceptions and some of the civil service exceptions. But these are short-term research contracts. They're not people that are going to be there for their entire career, and they have to be able to be able to move in and out. The presentation talks about Qualcomm being established out of UC San Diego by a former professor, and all of the other industries that have resulted as a result of that in San Diego. And so it is imperative that we assist the university in the establishment of this. I apologize that I'm rambling, and I think if during the lunch hour, all of us take the time to listen to that 25-minute presentation, it'd be much more eloquent, much more concise, and give all of you a much better understanding of what it is that Bill 190 is hoping to establish at the University of Guam, and to assist in diversifying our economy and bringing us into the 21st century. I will sit at this time and hope that all of you take the opportunity to, it's only 25 minutes, and then after lunch, hopefully you'll have some questions and I'll have some answers. And I'll also be able to expand on some other issues. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. I have two individuals on the list, and I know we only have a few minutes, and one of your co-sponsors wants to speak for about three minutes, but I think she can speak for 10, so, but, yeah, I think so. I'm going to go on the advice of the Vice Speaker for us during our lunch breaks to listen to that 25-minute presentation of the Chancellor, and then we'll be back at 2:00 this afternoon, continue with the discussion on Bill 190. Those who signed up to speak are Senator Yamashita and Senator St. Nicholas, and anybody else later. Senator Ogden. Okay, all right. So we're going to recess until 2:00 this afternoon.